Greetings and welcome to the Saco City Council Meeting for Monday, May 24th, 2021. Call the meeting to order at 6:30 PM. Let the record reflect that all councilors are present, including the city administrator. With that, I'd like to invite everybody to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. The flag is located behind city administrator Kenrath.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, everyone. That brings us to item four, which is general. There is one thing on general, however, I do just want to bring up something I spoke a little too early last week. We will not be able to go back to in-person meetings in June due to some work that's being done inside City Hall. So in-person meetings will resume in July. So we got notification of that late last week. With that, the next is the recognition honoring Champ Forbes. Give me one minute. Recognition of off, excuse me, honoring Officer Champ Forbes. Champ was an amazing dog who proudly served the citizens of Maine for over 10 years as a canine with the Maine State Police, along with his partner trooper Jeremy Forbes of Saco. Champ was directly responsible for many arrests and found many lost citizens with his highly-trained nose. Champ recently passed over the Rainbow Bridge, and we want to honor his memory. Canine Champ was a rescue dog that was donated to the state police by the Greater Portland Animal Refuge League. He was about three years old when he started training to be a police canine. It was clear from the start, he had a different personality and simply loved life and going to work. Trooper Jeremy Forbes has shared a few stories and thoughts about his late partner and friend. One of the first days that we had him, my young daughter wanted to walk with him. Tried to explain to her that he's a very strong, and even Champ didn't know his own strength. She insisted, I gave her the leash and wished her good luck. She soon found herself flying through the air and being dragged on the ground. She got up off the ground, wiped her off her hands, and agreed that it might be a few more years before she could walk him on her own. Another event that truly showed Champ's work ethic was a practice track that he conducted with him in South Portland. Another officer walked through the woods so that they could track him. Turned the track, I sprained my ankle and dropped the leash. To my dismay, Champ continued to track and would not come back. Champ tracked on his own for about a half mile before finding the officer hiding behind a tree. You can imagine the officer surprised to see Champ coming at him full speed with nobody at the end of the leash. The officer took out a tennis ball to reward and then walked him back to find me. The running joke with the canine handler was Champ could have tracked a lot better without me holding him back. Champ was used in countless drug investigations by organizations such as United States Drug Enforcement, FBI, Maine Drug Enforcement Agency, local police departments. Canine Champ was instrumental in taking countless amounts of drugs, such as heroin, crystal meth, and cocaine, off the streets of Maine. It will never be known how many lives were saved due to these drugs not getting on the street. Often agents from these departments would call Trooper Forbes directly on the phone to see if Champ was available to help out. Champ was very successful in tracking people. Champ successfully tracked several individuals over his career that were suffering from a mental health crisis and walked into the woods. Champ located these people, and they were able to get the help they needed. In September 2014, Champ tracked a fugitive from Florida that had run from the game wards. Champ was sent after the subject and held him until Trooper Forbes could try to arrest him. During the time, the subject punched Champ in the head several times, but Champ refused to let go, and the man was arrested. As nice as finding drugs and taking fugitives off the streets are, some of my favorite memories with Champ are conductor canine demonstrations for community events. People always loved seeing Champ demonstrate his skills during these events and ask him questions about him. Many places would call year after year to have Champ come back. One such place was the Bitterford Vocational High School. They have a legal studies class that I attended with Champ for a number of years. The students loved having Champ in the classroom and would often comment to the teacher that Champ was their favorite guest speaker. I tried not to be offended by that. I'll never know how many lives Champ saved by either taking drugs off the street or finding someone in the woods who needed help, but I do know that Champ was the best partner I could ask for, and we love. And that my family lost a piece of us on Wednesday, March 24th, 2021. We will never forget him. On behalf of myself and the council, we would like to express our thanks to Trooper Forbes and his continued service as a Maine State Trooper, and share our condolences with him and his family. And we'd just like to dedicate this Bark in the Park celebration coming up in June, in early June, June 5th, to be exact. We are dedicating Bark in the Park this year to Champ Forbes in honor of his service to the state of Maine and the communities. We will proclaim June 5th, the Bark in the Park Day, as Champ Forbes Day. So thank you very much, everyone, for that, and thank you to Trooper Jeremy Forbes, now Chief Deputy Jeremy Forbes for the York County Sheriff's Department, and thank you for Champ's service over the years. With that, that brings us to item five, committee correspondence down to council. Any committee correspondents at this time? Councilor Berman and the Councilor McPhail.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Mayor. On behalf of the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee, I want to tell you about a virtual Safer Walking Forum being held on Thursday, May 27th, from 6:00 PM to 8:30 PM. This is the second in a two-part series. It's sponsored by the Bicycle Coalition of Maine, the Maine DOT, and the city. It's designed to discuss issues for pedestrian safety as well as come up with solutions. You can find the link to the Zoom, as we have a virtual forum, on the city's social media, on Facebook, and also at tinyurl.com/saucosafewalking. That's again, it's Thursday, May 27th, from 6:00 to 8:30 PM.
Thank you, Councilor Berman. Councilor McPhail.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And you are right, in recognition of Champ Forbes, Saturday, June 5th, at 10:00 AM at the Saco Dog Park will be our Bark in the Park event. We are going to have rescue organizations, we will have vendors, we will have nonprofits. If you bring an item to donate, you will receive raffle ticket for prizes that we will have on hand, and the day will be dedicated honoring Champ. And I believe that we will also have some canine units there as well in recognition. So we hope to see everybody out for our first event of 2021.
Thank you, Councilor McPhail. Any further committee correspondents to council? Moving on to item six, any public comments? City Administrator Kenrath, have we received any public comment for tonight's meeting?
Nothing at this time, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you very much. At this time, I'd like to open up public comment to members of the public. If there's anybody on who'd like to speak to the council, please use the raise hand feature of the Zoom platform or star nine, and you'll be unmuted to speak to the council. Again, those wishing to speak to the council, please use the Zoom raise hand feature or star nine. There are no hands raised at this time. Moving on from public comment. Item seven, approval of the minutes for May 3rd and May 10th, 2021. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Some of them.
Councilor McPhail, is there a second?
Second.
Councilor Gunn, any discussion on the minutes? Roll call vote on the minutes. Council Archer?
Aye.
Councilor Purdy?
Yes.
Councilor Gunn?
Yes.
Councilor Berman?
Yes.
Councilor Hatch?
Yes.
Councilor McPhail?
Yes.
Councilor Johnston?
No.
Motion passes 6-1. Item eight, consent agenda items. There are two consent agenda items, and that is A, to approve the schedule for June meeting dates, and then B, notice of election for June 8th, 2021, the budget validation referendum election. Is there a motion to approve the consent item?
Some of them.
Councilor McPhail, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Johnston. Any discussion on the consent items? Roll call vote on the consent items. Council Archer?
Aye.
Councilor Purdy?
Yes.
Councilor Gunn?
Yes.
Councilor Berman?
Yes.
Councilor Hatch?
Yes.
Councilor McPhail?
Yes.
Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0. Brings us to item nine, action items. First up, we have a public hearing, a new application for a special entertainment permit for Go See Tyce BBQ, that's T-Y-C-E BBQ. And that is Councilor Gunn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mabel Reed Wallace, doing business as Go See Tyce BBQ, has applied for a new special entertainment permit. The permit will be concurrent with the establishment's liquor license. The applicant has paid all applicable permit fees, and the clerk has properly advertised a public hearing in accordance with the Saco City Code, Chapter 93, Entertainment, Section 93-2. Staff recommends approval. I move to open the public hearing.
Motion's been made by Councilor Gunn to open a public hearing. Is there a second?
A second.
Councilor Berman? Or is that Councilor Hatch?
Councilor Hatch.
Thank you. Motion's been made by Councilor Gunn, second by Councilor Hatch. Any discussion on opening the public hearing? No discussion, roll call vote. Council Archer?
Aye.
Councilor Purdy?
Yes.
Councilor Gunn?
Yes.
Councilor Berman?
Yes.
Councilor Hatch?
Yes.
Councilor McPhail?
Yes.
Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0 to open the public hearing. Public hearing is now open at 6:42 PM. If there's anyone who would like to speak on this item, please use the raise hand feature of the Zoom platform or star nine. Seeing no hands raised, Councilor Gunn?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to close the public hearing and be it ordered that the city council grant the new application submitted by Mabel Reed Wallace, doing business as Go See Tyce BBQ, for a special entertainment permit to be concurrent with the establishment's liquor license. I move to approve the order.
Motion's been made by Councilor Gunn. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilor Berman. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion. Roll call vote on closing the public hearing and approving the special entertainment permit. Council Archer?
Aye.
Councilor Purdy?
Yes.
Councilor Gunn?
Yes.
Councilor Berman?
Yes.
Councilor Hatch?
Yes.
Councilor McPhail?
Yes.
Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0 at 6:44 PM. Brings us to item B, a final reading, amendments to Chapter 118. Councilor Berman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At the Coastal Waters Commission Meeting on January 12th, 2021, the commissioners approved two proposed amendments to the Chapter 118 Harbor River and Waterfront Regulations dated March 17th, 2014, per consideration and adoption by the city council. The first update is in Section 118.5, Paragraph H, Item 2, which changes December to November. The reason behind this change is that after December 1st, recreational boats become a hazard. Owners have abused this cutoff and left boats to freeze in the water. This causes added hardship on the harbor master, who must monitor these vessels until they are removed. A November 1st deadline would not infringe on anyone's recreation and would relieve this problem. The second item to be addressed, also in Section 118.5, is for the use of the city of Saco courtesy moorings. In the newly-added Paragraph K, the reason for this change is that at present, the city of Saco provides two moorings in the cocktail cove area of the river to allow river users to tie up for lunch, fishing, and swimming. Overnight tie-ups are permitted, but should not be abused, as has been the case. Two years ago, one person occupied a mooring for almost the entire season. The harbor master requires a basis on which to prevent this occurrence and abuse of the privilege. I move the city of Saco hereby ordains and approves the second and final reading of amendments to Chapter 118.
Motion's been made by Councilor Berman. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Purdy? Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, roll call vote. Council Archer?
Aye.
Councilor Purdy?
Yes.
Councilor Gunn?
Yes.
Councilor Berman?
Yes.
Councilor Hatch?
Yes.
Councilor McPhail?
Yes.
Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0. That brings us to item C, a final reading of zone change request for 97 New County Road, 106 New County Road, and 107 New County Road on page 30 in the packets, and that is Councilor Archer.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Applicants John and Linda Fenderson are asking zoning of their property, West Residential, be changed to rural conservation. The Fendersons own and live on the property at 97 New County Road. They run a small farming operation with livestock and crops. The Fendersons are near, but do not abut the boundary that separates the RW from the RC. The property of their budding neighbors to the west Patterson separate the Fendersons' parcel from the WR backslash RC boundary. The Pattersons own two parcels, one on each side of New County Road, and theirs are the westernlymost parcels still in the WR district. The Pattersons, too, have requested a change of zoning for their two parcels from WR to RC. This item was reviewed by the planning board at its March 30th meeting. After discussion and public hearing, the board voted to forward a positive recommendation to the council during the council's discussion on April 20th. An earlier map showing the potential for a portion of city-owned land to be included in the rezoning was referenced, the proposed solar Fenderson plan. I move to approve the final reading and adopt the rezoning request for the parcels at 97 New County Road and those identified as tax map 87 Lot 17 and tax map 96 Lots 9, 9-TAC 1, 1, 2, and 17.
Motion's been made by Council Archer. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilor Hatch. Discussion? Councilor McPhail?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We did receive the email today with a list of five tax map and lot numbers that I believe need to be adjusted into the motion to make sure they're correct. And it looks like city planner Hamlin is on, and he can...
I didn't get that.
Councilor, I'd be glad to speak briefly on this. Mr. Mayor, thank you. Yes, I just wanted to clarify, the listing that appears on the agenda is incomplete. There are five parcels that are part of this, the owners of which have either requested or agreed that they would appreciate being included in this rezoning. And I'll start right at the top, and this is brief, there are five parties. John and Linda Fenderson at 97 New County Road, tax map 87 Lot 17. Next is Tate and Carol Patterson, 105 New County Road, and that's tax map 96 Lot 9. The Pattersons are involved with the next one. The owner is John, J-O-N, Patterson, 107 New County Road. Fourth is, once again, Tate and Carol Patterson. There is no structure. There is no structure on this parcel, so it is not assigned a street number. However, it is tax map 96 Lot 1. That would be the southerly parcel owned by the Pattersons, southerly side of New County Road with a pond on it. And then finally, Norma Wright. I had the pleasure of meeting Ms. Wright this afternoon. She lives at 106 New County Road. She has the smallish parcel fronting on New County Road that is surrounded by the Pattersons' southerly parcel. That parcel is identified as tax map 96 Lot 2. So those are the five lots, and I'm sorry I didn't clarify that earlier for the council, but staff is very comfortable in recommending each of these five. All these folks are on board.
Thank you, Planner Hamlin. I don't know that I received the email that Councilor McPhail is talking about either. If it came in today earlier, I have not had the opportunity to review emails prior to the meeting, which is why the council in the past has adopted that kind of rule, that if there's something that comes up on a Monday night, that they're not going to really look into it and maybe table the motion until it's made correctly. Are you saying that the suggested motion does not work, or it needs to be amended? If so, if a counselor feels like making an amendment to the suggested motion, then the councilors can do that. However, if it's something that needs to be amended, perhaps a simple tabling until the June 7th meeting, until we make sure all the tax maps and property maps are up to date, you know, might be helped.
One moment here. 1, 2, and 17. It is mostly correct. 17. 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6. Yeah.
Perhaps we should just make a motion to table. If there's a counselor that would be willing to make a motion to table, and we can bring this back up on June 7th. Because it seems like there's a lot of moving parts, and we want to make sure that we do it correctly.
Mayor, I'm not contradicting, and I'm all for that. I think I've just figured out, in fact, if the council removed the final lot number, which is 17 in the motion, then the remainder of the motion is accurate. So it's tax map 87 Lot 17, that is the Fendersons, the prime property here, and then tax map 96 Lots 9, 9-1, 1, and 2. Those are all correct.
Thank you, city planner Hamlin. Council Archer, I see your hand up.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will, as the person who put the motion forward, I will request that we table it for one week, or to our next meeting. It has come to my notice, this email came in at 3:50 PM today, and I have looked, and my fellow councilors have not had a chance to receive it. The mayor, it did go to you, but you mentioned that you didn't have a chance to review it. So I think just in the best practice, we should put this as a table until we have a chance to review.
Second.
Motion to table has been made by Council Archer, second by Council Johnston. Roll call vote on tabling. Council Archer?
Aye.
Councilor Purdy?
Yes.
Councilor Gunn?
Yes.
Councilor Berman?
Yes.
Councilor Hatch?
Yes.
Councilor McPhail?
Yes.
Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion to table passes 7-0. We'll see this again on June 7th. That brings us to item D, and that is one reading, Article 19, Historic Preservation Clarification. That is Councilor Gunn on page 61 in your pack.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. During the broader zoning ordinance revision process that began following the adoption of the 2018 Comp Plan Update, the Historic Preservation Commission pursued amendments to their chapter of the ordinance, then known as Section 230 through 413. Once the amendments to that chapter, known as Article 19, were deemed complete, the Historic Preservation Commission and Planning Board held public hearings and forwarded positive recommendations to council for adoption of the proposed amendments. These amendments passed at the November 18th, 2019 council meeting, following a further public hearing with the city council. Amendments were subsequently recodified from Article 19 to replace the existing, at the time, Historic Preservation Chapter, Section 230 through 413, during the council meeting on December 16th, 2019. Because of the previous adaption of the Historic Preservation Chapter in 2019, there was an omission on the part of the drafters in including amended Historic Preservation Chapter in the full set of amendments that went to the council and which were subsequently adapted on January 11th, 2021. Motion as made on that date repealed the existing zoning ordinance and replaced it with what was known as Exhibits 1, 2, 3, and 4. These exhibits did not include the Historic Preservation Chapter as adapted on November 18th, 2019. The council is being asked to add back into Article 19 Historic Preservation Overlay District to the city's zoning ordinance. With emphasis, this is not a new piece of zoning. The purpose of this clarifying vote is to correct a drafting error that admitted a section that had previously been approved, but that the drafters failed to append to the new zoning ordinance. Recommendation, a staff recommends the city council move to add back in Article 19 Historic Preservation Overlay District in order to correct the drafting error within the recently-adapted zoning ordinance. I move to add Article 19 Historic Preservation Overlay District attached as Exhibit 2 back into city code, Chapter 230 zoning, as Article 19, in order to correct the drafting error within the broader zoning ordinance as adapted by this body on January 11th, 2021.
Motion's been made by Councilor Gunn. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Johnston. Any discussion? Roll call vote, hearing no discussion. Council Archer?
Aye.
Councilor Purdy?
Yes.
Councilor Gunn?
Yes.
Councilor Berman?
Yes.
Councilor Hatch?
Yes.
Councilor McPhail?
Yes.
Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0. That brings us to item E, a first reading for the Riverwind Farms Contract Zone on page 82 in the packet, and that is Council Archer.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Riverwind's Farm contract was approved by city council in July 2015, which allowed the establishment of educational horseback riding program. It used not otherwise allow them to see one zone. Beth Dawson, proprietor of the Riverwind's Farm and Estate, then sought approval for an amendment to the contract zone, which was granted by the council in September 2017, allowing the establishment of a venue for hosting private events, such as weddings, graduation parties, and similar events on the property, place of public assembly. Ms. Austin now proposes to amend the contract zone again, seeking approval to hold self-sponsored events on the property, which would allow public events such as comedy shows, dinner, theater, music, and holiday shows, special community classes, and events in the open houses. The planning board reviewed the proposed amendment at its March 16th, 2021 meeting and voted 5-0 to forward a negative recommendation to the council. I move to approve the first reading to schedule a public hearing for June 7th, 2021.
Motion's been made by Council Archer. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor McPhail. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, roll call vote. Council Archer?
Aye.
Councilor Purdy?
Yes.
Councilor Gunn?
Yes.
Councilor Berman?
Yes.
Councilor Hatch?
Yes.
Councilor McPhail?
Yes.
Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0 to approve a first reading and schedule a public hearing for June 7th, 2021. That brings us to item F, a first reading, 507 Main Street Contract Zone, and that is on page 111 of your packet, and that is Councilor Gunn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Applicant Saco Retail Management LLC requests consideration of a contract zone that would enable a 5,350 square foot commercial building to replace what has been a Pizza Hut for several years. The highway business zone allows each of the proposed uses and any establishment, a drive-through window service, and retail, but the applicant... proposed uses and any establishment, a drive-through window service, and retail, but the applicant seeks to ensure that a drive-through is allowed, that parking between the street and the building is allowed, and that the drive-through lane is allowed to be less than five feet from a property line. This item was reviewed by the planning board at its May 4th meeting. After discussion and a public hearing, the board voted to forward a negative recommendation to the council. I move to approve the first reading and schedule a public hearing for June 7th, 2021.
Motion's been made by Counselor Gunn. Is there a second?
Second.
And second by Counselor Archer? Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, roll call vote. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0 to approve first reading and set a public hearing for June 7th, 2021. That brings us to Item 10, New Business. We have Item A, a waiver of business pack covenants for schools on page 142 in your packet, and I think we're going to hear from Economic Development Director, excuse me, Economic and Community Planning Development Director Denise Clavett.
Evening everyone. So just a little bit of a backdrop before this item gets read. There's no action on this this evening. We're just giving you a little bit of background. The schools did come to the Economic Development Commission meeting and to request a blanket waiver for the use of properties in the business parks in order to accommodate school use should the need arise. At the time when they were looking, there were several facilities that were open and part of the conversation, I think, I believe to date with my recent conversations with the superintendent via email, that it's likely that they're all set, but he did want us to move forward with getting a blanket waiver, if you will, of the covenants in order for nonprofit, AKA the schools, to be able to locate there should the need arise. And so what we would like to do is to just proceed with that, work with city attorney Tim Murphy to be able to accommodate that use as an emergency use for the schools. And then this way, I mean, we would start the process, obviously, of amending the ordinance, I mean, the covenants to that effect. But at this point in time, it's likely that none of the facilities or the buildings in those parks are going to be needed, but it's better to be safe than sorry should something arise. Because we do know that to amend the covenants, it will take a two to three meeting process, and given the schedule for the summer meetings, we need to set the wheels in motion for that. Unless anybody has any questions, I think the IC is pretty self-explanatory, and when we would come back, Tim Murphy would actually write the language that would be needed to amend the covenants.
Thank you Director Clavett. Any questions? Counselor Berman?
Yeah, just to be clear, this would be a time-limited emergency situation for a year or maybe two until the pandemic is resolved. Is that correct?
That is correct. And it's, I mean, at this point, I would probably cover it for the next two school years, if you know what I'm saying. So I would have it extended for basically the balance of this calendar year, school year, and the other school year. So, yeah, so effective probably end of June 2023, if that makes any sense.
Thank you. Counselor Archer?
Yes, thank you Mr. Mayor. Primarily, I'm on board with this. However, where I do get cautious, and what I'd like for legal and the team staff to look at is if we do something to this, which again, on its face, I will, I support at this moment, it needs to be clear and defined when it can be used, what's going on, what's an emergency, who shall establish the emergency powers, things of this nature, because I see this in perpetuity for any other emergency event, hurricane, something destroys one of our schools, something to that level, but I believe it really needs to be clearly defined and not just a loose interpretation of what emergency means. And again, the who, the what, the where, all that good stuff, legal terms, just to protect, one, the covenants of the, of any of that this would apply to, but also just fairness, again, it should only be used as a last resort under this current year. I would agree that this year would have applied. This situation would apply, but again, clear definitions. We do not need to be in an emergency situation fighting covenant issues based on legal interpretation in the future. But again, I'm on board on its face.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thoughts? Counselor Purdy, you are assigned this as it came through the EDC. Are you okay with making the motion?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, if there's no further questions, no further discussion, moving on to Item B, which is the sale of city-owned parcel, excuse me, sale of city-owned properties, Claire Parcels and Phillips Spring Road on page 144 in your packet. Again, I think Director Clavett will give us a brief overview.
As you see in the IC, there are two sets of parcels that are up for conversation. We did pull them all in together because the Economic Development Commission did recommend that all parcels be put on the market for sale. We all know that the Phillips Spring Road were already part of the language for the bond for the Public Works facility. In other words, to build that facility, you would be selling those parcels. So that's already been subdivided. It has a subdivision plan ready to go, ready to sell. And so the authorization from there, I mean, the recommendation for the city council to give authorization to the city administrator to sell these parcels with the help of staff is ready to go. The other one is the Claire Parcels are the parcels that are behind Millbrook, if you will, you go between Lots 1, 2, and 3, between 3 and 4, there is an easement that gets you to these parcels that traverses a landowner, Kevin Bowyer's land, and then there's a parcel there 40-plus minus acres. That parcel was originally purchased with the intention of building a new business park. The market analysis subsequently identified that business parks municipally owned are things of, for lack of a better word, days gone by. And so that we should actually sell the parcels to a developer to develop the parcels and that the cities and municipalities should not be in the business of developing parks. So that being said, the interest is again there to sell those parcels. So there's a couple of motions that are there, and I have had conversations with Counselor Purdy and with city administrator Brian Keenrath and Mayor Doyle. Two things can happen. You can list them all with a commercial broker, which is a really great idea, because, you know, but now that the department is split and the focus is on economic development, we literally have, as of even like tomorrow, we're meeting with another potential business looking for 70,000 square foot building. So we have probably a list of four to five people interested in the Claire Parcels, four to five people interested in the Phillips Springs Road parcels. And so short of going through a broker, we would probably want to exclude the ones that we've already had conversations with. And if you take a look at the simple math, little over 2 million for all of those properties and anywhere from 15% to 20% commercial broker commission, it's my recommendation, even though that the commission was respectful of the time that Jess and I had, but that was before we split the departments, we could say potentially 350 to 400,000 by trying it on our own first. And so I would seriously like the council to take a look at having us try that with a competitive RFP process, similar to what we did with the Public Works Building. And so anywhere from four to six to eight weeks, and if that doesn't produce any results or outcomes, then we go to a competitive bid process to identify and hire a commercial broker to sell the properties. Keep in mind that we, you folks, prior to my arrival here, Millbrook sold one or two lots with a broker, then they stopped the broker, and when I first got here, the market picked up and we sold five lots in one year with no commission paid to a broker. And so there, we do have that opportunity. So I just want to put it out there that maybe we should try first, you know, as a city and take it from there. But again, that's the council's guidance to give to Brian, and then Brian will work with Jess and I, and we will work on trying to sell that the way that you want us to.
Thank you Director Clavett. Counselor Purdy?
Thank you Mr. Mayor. Yeah, after discussing it with Director Clavett, I certainly would like to give her and her staff a chance to sell these lots for the city. It's going to save us, like she said, potentially $400,000. That's a pretty healthy amount of money that will be added to the city's coffers. So I would definitely support that action. Thank you.
Thank you Counselor Hatch, and then Counselor Johnston. Counselor Hatch?
I would just, I would like to express my support of that as well, what Jim just said. I think we should give Denise an opportunity to try to leverage those opportunities without a broker. Certainly, I think would serve the best interest of the city to have her do that. So I would be in support of that as well.
Thank you Counselor Johnston.
Thank you. So the Phillips Spring Parcels, I have no issue with. You know, as it was stated, that was the intent when we went to bond. As far as the Claire Parcels, you know, I can respect the opinions of the EDC staff and the market analysis, but I view selling these lots as rather foolish and shortsighted. You know, the council that I was a part of that purchased these lots did so with the goal in mind of land banking for a future business park. There was no timeline that was established. It was more about recognizing a potential future need and being proactive in acquisition of land that was close to other city business parks. In addition, I recall in conversations with former staff and counselors about realizing that property values and sales were skyrocketing at the time, and obviously they continue to. And so, you know, those parcels were relatively well-priced at the time. So I think we realized that, you know, it made sense to purchase them and hold them, regardless of whether or not we were going to use it for a business park. You know, it just made sense to hold for future city needs. However many, what, three years later, I don't think really much has changed. You know, these lots were paid for and holding on to them until a future time, you know, where a need arises and the city can control the outcome makes sense to me. You know, we've had a history of doing that throughout the city. You know, we did that with the current location where the Saco Central Fire Station is, that was purchased in the mid 90s and wasn't, you know, built upon until 2010. So, I mean, I understand that perhaps today we're not looking at building a business park. I also understand that what the market analysis said, but I can shine a little light where a lot of those comments came from developers, were really in respect of Unit 91 and had less to do with about business parks. The city has a longstanding history of successful business park build-outs dating back to the 1970s. So obviously, nothing prevents a developer from coming and knocking on our door and saying they would like to purchase the land. We will go through that Chapter 81 review in the future. I think, you know, seeking the sale is, like I said, shortsighted. You know, today, 2021, this council has no idea what the future needs may be in 2031, for example, and we still have a rather large thing looming over us, which is school construction, and we do not know where that location will be. So again, seeking an asset or seeking to sell an asset that we already own doesn't make much sense to me. Thank you.
Thank you Counselor Berman.
I just want to make a small request. Then when we see items like this in the packet in the future, could we have maps with the parcels identified so we can better see where they are, their extent, their size, and location? I would appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Any other questions for Director Clavett? Counselor Purdy, because this came through the EDC, you are the counselor liaison. Are you willing to stay on as the council liaison?
Yes.
Okay, that brings us to Item C, Chapter 176 Sewer Ordinance. I believe we're going to be joined by Director Carter.
Good evening, Council, Mr. Mayor. Thanks for having me. There we go. Yeah, again, thanks for having me. As most of you know, that the current sewer ordinance was adopted back in 1995, had a few minor updates since then. We've really been working on this now for a couple of years, and some of the purpose to modernize it, it's got to do with updating our sewer design standards, state and federal pre-treatment requirements, Clean Water Act, and our discharge permit. So knowing that, that this is a big undertaking, Emily Cole Prescott developed this regulatory crosswalk, you all the read through. We know it's a lot of readings. We figured at least tonight, we'll at least introduce it, see if there's any questions, but probably the best thing going forward with this is if you have, excuse me, if you have any questions, let us know and email us, and then we'll tailor our next presentation around those questions, if there's any glaring things out there. This has already been reviewed by the Public Works Department, code enforcement, the city administrator, and the city attorney have already commented. And the PDSC has also been aware of the revision. So with that, I'll take any questions, any thoughts or comments going forward. Probably be at least a couple of weeks before we come back to you with the.
Any questions at this time for Director Carter? Okay. Is there a counselor? Page. Counselor McPhail, you are the council liaison on this matter for Waste Water Recovery Department. Would you like to be, continue on as the counselor liaison?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, seeing no questions. Thank you for joining us Director Carter. Nice to see, and thank you for joining us again, Emily Cole Prescott.
Yeah, I appreciate it. Like you said, don't be shy about reaching out. Well, we'll tailor the next presentation around any questions you might have.
Okay.
Thank you.
And that completes the new business part of the agenda, and then brings us to Item 11, Administrator Updates. City Administrator Kanner?
Thank you Mr. Mayor. First, I'd like to announce there will be, from the Maine Municipal Association, they will be having an elected officials workshop at the Saco Ramada Inn on August 18th. Registration begins at 4:00 PM. The session will end by 8:00 PM. Topics included will be open meetings and records, roles and responsibilities, effective communication, media relations, and conflicts of interest. Costs $45, including a late dinner being provided. We are MMA members, so we would be at the $45 rate if anyone is interested in participating. Just an update on collective bargaining agreements. I expect to have five proposed agreements for council consideration at our June 7th and June 21st council meetings. These units include our PD units, as well as Public Works and Parks and Rec, and our Wastewater Recovery Division. More information will be forthcoming as we wrap up the negotiations over the next couple of weeks. Another reminder on absentee voting. Absentee voting is now underway for the June election. Voters may request a ballot by phone by calling the clerk's office at 284-4831, or you can download an application on our website at socomaine.org under City Clerk Voting and Elections. You may also vote in person at City Hall, and we will have extended hours on the evenings of June 3rd until 6:00 PM and June 4th until 5:00 PM. And voters may also utilize our new ballot drop box located on the Cuts Avenue side of City Hall. Our next Senior Meals Program event will be on June 3rd at the Saco Community Center, beginning at 11:00 AM. Rapid Rays will be providing lobster rolls, and there will also be Italians from the Bradley Street Deli. Of course, anyone interested in volunteering, please contact Amelia Meyer in our Parks and Rec Department. And finally, just a quick reminder of my. And finally, just a quick reminder of my city administrators' open office hours. We'll be meeting, um, here on the second floor of City Hall tomorrow, May 25th, uh, from 3:00 to 5:00 PM, and encourage everyone uh, to attend and share anything they would like. That's all I have. Have any second questions?
Thank you, City Administrator Kenner. Any questions for the city administrator? Okay. Moving on to item 12, council discussion and comment. Any council discussion and comment tonight? Okay, Councilor Johnston.
Oh, I gotta find my notes. Um, well, one of them off the top of my head. I just realized, and, and maybe I'm not accurate, but I don't believe we actually have appointed Counselor Hatch to any of the subcommittees. So that's something we probably should do. And the other thing was the city historian, is, is that something that's going to be upcoming in the future, an appointment? I, I believe that's past the 45-day uh, requirement for code to go into effect. Uh, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Johnston. Any further council discussion and comment? Moving on to, uh, item 13, executive session. Is there a motion to enter executive session? Counselor McPhail?
Be it ordered that the city council enter into an executive, this executive session pursuant to MRSA Title 1, Chapter 113, Subchapter 1, Section 405.6, Discussion Regarding Real Property and Use of Property.
Motion's been made by Counselor McPhail. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Counselor Hatch. Any discussion? Roll call vote to enter executive session. Counsel Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Hatch?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0 to enter executive session at 7:22 PM. Please migrate over to the Zoom link you were provided by City Administrator Kenner.
Come back everyone, I think we're just waiting on Councilor Gunn to join us and then we'll get started. Councilor Gunn has now arrived, is there a motion to exit executive session? Councilor Purdy, is there a second?
Second that.
Second by Councilor Hatch to exit executive session, any discussion? Roll call vote to exit executive session, Council Archer?
Aye.
Councilor Purdy?
Yes.
Councilor Gunn?
Yes.
Councilor Berman?
Yes.
Councilor Hatch?
Yes.
Councilor McPhail?
Yes.
Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero to exit executive session at eight twenty seven P M. Brings us to item fourteen, a report from executive session, is there any report?
No report, Mr. Mayor.
Council McPhail says no report, thank you, that brings us to item fifteen as her motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Councilor Johnston, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilor Hatch, any discussion on adjournment? Roll call to adjourn, Council Archer?
Aye.
Councilor Purdy?
Yes.
Councilor Gunn?
Yes.
Councilor Berman?
Yes.
Councilor Hatch?
Yes.
Councilor McPhail?
Yes.
And Councilor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn passes seven zero at eight twenty eight P M, thank you very much, everyone have a great evening and be well.
Good night.